Yaya Yemba, BP Machines. Takan boirei sa kuti tshukunai kubranbechi zokaplokta sata atengiwa. En de sunwosun shagati koe sheyi, ika wutano, re bakari. Tsunwokunbi na wabuta atengi. Anu na meirekutin ni giri giranda eru xipiwasobutanutuama sisibazi buta shirekuru. Itsunwokunbi na buta atengi. Panayi kita bo tumda ona payne ma xueti disema fakseens. Agaita se ma BCji, anu wa evana. Itsunwamaso kuti kutitini zitendapanana fataka panepu. Chikanda na wu, chichiyeke tijatshiba ona yu fakseense se wae. Sagati ka woma buta wugra agaita se biliyeku xetiswa ma BCji wae. Ah shenge shagato oma. Tsunwokunbi na wakuti ve yewu. Munani se bereshun shagati koe sheyi. Jagania ishaga ngenisa koe sheyi. Seki jujushu ma BCji ma BP Machines wae, jutei wae wu. Ite nde rambere, so ona kuti kuti tyaeta dambo zipo. Re buta kope marara. I nenyaya ma kritza unema registre se, aru garata angofan. Itsunwokunbi na wakuti fa gazi, so diboszi. Ka kuti se wando garayindu, tatuwa mun photuwi. Marasi na buta koro, en de marari tja mbiwa. Sagan wokunbi na wosikatzi, thank you.
Thank you, Councillor. Yes, Councillor.
Thank you, Oshie. Ni na juangu ita, kana na ita, nyenyika. Itsunwoda, se barasi wotini ita, fataka wotanora smaxu no koe tsa ngopi. Sagan drosuniru, raya mamae, anu sanbarasi bayama nju senti. Sambodzi, raya sanbi ya kisi ngopa leka, i to council juwa pati. And this is, juwa xinjali trongo, na wa xinjali, wa jivo i outside, and this is.
Committee, Oshie. Yes, yok.
Tsunwana tu, kesa ona, iti yame.
Thank you, Oshie. Outta na wu pindura, fataka wongu na councila. In terms of my issues to do with, such as my BP Machines. My request is that we can still provide a solution, and we are still awaiting your response. And then, so far, in terms of my rights, we managed to purchase up to 5%. Which means an 8% decrease from the previous month, citing my financial constraints, Oshie. My request is that any guy has known that, na ma, he will have a thing da English. As you can understand, kuti yawu department no contribute. Karu no one equaliser no contribute, it's more amount for a reference. So probably, that's why I was in a tea tower, so stay pa maro kech. So an 8% decrease the previous month. E, rana be, utani tu la machanda na wewu, Oshie. Yes, naturally, in the duty, on the previous two months, fagaisa request. They have been delayed, waiting for a manese that tied out a way to the department. But we only granted twins. Fagaisa request, see ne kutsi, ma dispensary assistance, wa no pamshunguwa leka, fama, fama, fama. Despera ne ba chiwa, re ne shunga. Wa muva xuma nese, Oshie. Kya request was, e, rana yawa, so enda mawats. So that council now can employ, wa na kame rabdispesamshunga, shinda such a query, Oshie. So some of these nurses, they are not working mawats, wa nsa ngua shan, wa rukshanda, hapsafe, rana, ne wachika pa ma nes. So it's an issue, that's why request was the our mission, department, it was still awaiting response. Thank you, Oshie.
Okay. You mentioned this, but there's a session. Yes, Councillor.
Panayi yasuna wu pindu, tengi pa tawo nyaya, iema reti zisad. Kada ne kuti, adjourned set department tuwa, chairperson kuti, no rongo wu, so far, ni mona zamutu, dakafatima break down. Also, fati tuwa drensesi, ya dakarutu dishtona, para skuta wukoma, se kurengu. Re kada wongu ra, tunna, tunna, shpire shapari, ta drosu. Tsukati kweyere kena tango pa.
Thank you, Oshie, sorry for the inconvenience. Eh, tati nitaleni, Oshie. Right now is a script you, with a couple of four vehicles in motion, C5 combata, C10 combata, C9 reflector. Ne skipa ye du, ya tu no plaza, wae no fight move. Nitaleni, nitaleni, Oshie, ne kuti, have a hard net issue, the mass case, I said at the end. It's something that always goes back to the finance department. For example, this one, ili, ili down because, it's not like over. I know pretty much. Then, ne, si twenty two, ili down dakare, ku da, i go over. Ya kada longu barabakoma demand. Ne si depseri, ki nona, eh, over again, i inju, de ne si o systema, i ajin tu da programi. At this point in time, we don't have the capacity, as a council, to program this vehicle. Then, ne so, kini tula i du dakare, ya ka loser, if you're in the machine, it's a key fact. So, the challenge we have, Oshie, I've been always emphasizing, yes, Rosh Tene. Kuti, sa this vehicle is a council, we do not have the capacity to save them. We've been advocating, if possible, where can this subcontractor organizations, are you capacity except some of that? Boya jili za mu kona za da mira. Ie kuti, rana ma kala be, wa makinawa, thanks for the service. Dakar, wokunpa ino example, ewo, wu, faya, 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 Oshie. Le, yanga, faya, faya, shen. Dakar, ayda challenge, je kia pos. Parakan wu, kiswado korri, imso ne, rana ma koko, tala kati ziroka, zira mo da zeko. Dakar, paratanga fama. So this is some of the challenges, kuti, if possible, we should realize. We say, ne ngeni, imso this vehicles, to specialize organizations, that can save these vehicles. No, it's here, ramba dakar, no, tinge kisna, tuwa nisiru, tinge kisna, uniangu, no, no, tati. Sagan, no, chemo, ya tina tu se department, Oshie, that's it.
Thank you. Yeah, answer, Councillor, more.
I am, na, wosinashi, wola kuzogela, pa niswa, wa tawo, kumitu. A council, tadi kuti, timo ti giranda, rongo wu, wae na, kusua, drensesi ni ati. Mona, kusmo, nitakafa, mara, shunkuwa, ma tuwanda, maro kech. Tuwa, no, aso, tisla, ma tine, da muti, kota, muti, pa wenyene, drensesi. Timo, shaka, eh, dakar, wa, wa, tinga, wa, den, drensesi, kanti ku. So fama, pa wenyene, after drensesi, meka, va, yu, don't go, kanti, so. Ju, shigawa, na.
Thank you.
I, si siwa, mukui, du la se. So, um, zilipada, Oshie.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Yow, Oshie. I, ni, nyaya, wu, kuzo, kuzo, mu, chan. Yo, ya, tito, de, si, si. Saga, chani, nyanso, para, fasi. Eh, yewu, koe, de, sa, ne, kuti, shu, no, go, na, koo, manesi. Nungo, ya, gata, de, sala, na, ye, yewu, kme, atu, mu, tra. Marara, akini, ya, ka, onga, na, pasi, na, pa, ni, ni, a, tere, shi, tia, tia, sa, ye, teke, no, tia, tia, tio, si. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, uh, Councillor, Zolam, spilbe, yu, bo, ni, ose, razi.
Mo, Oshie.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Oshie. Erati, me, dani, wu, proposa, tara, wu, isha, erati, zutiaha, wu, wezni, ritsi, nyamshiga, zutuwa. Si, ri, pa, si, kisa, na, kushak. Ochamiti, ya, kuchaka, timo, tka, rupitumi, na, rangu. Shrego, si, televera, shidura, marara, pora, senasiya. Zeru, zene, ya, kutsi, zakora, las, oso, kutsi, se, ke, tezi. Rongo, wa, na, pa, zongo, e, zakamina, ya, kutsi, kia, ti, kewo. Dakar, tsumbo, wa, na, kara, kara, kara. Ka briefing, kati, na, kuti, kamira, se, ju, ne, te, re, kati. Woz, ne mama, si, ti, si, go, na, pi, fama, shi, ri, ta. So that it time, ye, mo, tka, rupitzi, ya, tu, no, garas, tu, garay, se, ju, na, kasho. Ye, kuti, kshanda, pa, tu, ne, baksho. To, to, ra, utotuwi, kutote, de, ra, ma, rangu, da, kichaka, ra, ma.
Yes, Councillor. Thank you, Oshie. Eh, ni, no, tina, ni, wu, tuwa, councila, tuwa. No, tio, tuni, de, zon, de, rati, kisa, na, shima, si, di, o, Oshie. I, jiji, yewu, de, no, de, committee. Ya, kati, problem, so, tu, mo, tu, so, kuti, problem, si, di, o, inu, kshanda, se. Eh, sagan, bife, pa, nu, tu, na, mi, wa, Oshie. And, ti, chokwa, ge, tu, no, basi, la, pa, kuti, mo, da, zeru, de, si, na, ni, de, ma, ya, tsi, da, maro kech. De za, kwe, ya, pa, nu, pa, ni, chi, eti, kuti, si, mo, da, ya, tsi, ki, za, tinge, ta, cha. Tinge, tu, no, ganza, mara, e, pa. Pa, kuma, ne, wu, balo, da, eh, mara, e, onga, da, si, tu, wa, na, pa, samse. Sa, is a problem, ya, tina, eh, ya, ka, mi, rain, de, mi, leche. No, so, council, ya, ka, tu, apu, fa, kuti, ju, jipi, jipi, ka. Sangbo, mi, no, ti, tu, me, tien, ya, tue, iti, wu, oso, kuti, committee, go, tu, sa, wakuti, shu, za, ju, tu, ni, ya, si, pasi. No, pa, tada, mi, kati, pa, Oshie, pa, ye, ma, sa, koe.
Thank you, Oshie, President. Yes, Councillor.
Thank you, Oshie. Oh, muti, no, si, wa, kuti, mu, go, ba, mu, onga, tuwa, nle, tuwa, no, sa, rati. Asita, ona, pa, ya, dambo, ti, we, eh, veni, extreme calculation. Ya, ra, kai, si, wa, inonzi. Ime, ya, kwe, eh, extreme, kai, calculation. Is, I was moving towards a rare road. I've noticed, kuti, mu, na, ado, cher, ma, komba, eti, bag. Ada, na, wukinda, mu, tre. Ti, bu, pa, wa, ni, na, ma, kuli, sa, pasati, ku, sa, ku, ya, am, ke, cha. No, wa, apfu, ira, angos, ongo, si, ya, pa, nu, tka, wa, nu, cheti, no, kuti, akati, shari. Sagan, no, na, wu, wunza, kuti, mu, ne, u, rongo, wu, we, to control, eh, beni, agriculture. No, kana, nyango, ma, wa, do, garao, ko. Wa, na, ni, wa, chiri, ma, yu, ne, chiba, du, kuti, mu, no, tobanda, chiba, mu, no, tobanda, mba, fa. So, what plans do we have to control, eh, agriculture? So that our country, it's, ah, sa, fti, na, ma, chet, eh, tu, zo, tamborani, ma, flood.
Thank you, Oshie. I think, you're honored, Oshie, to cancel, that, you know, full land environment. The control of this thing is not under our permission, basically, thank you.
Okay. Sa, mchen, mchen, ge, tia, Oshie. Okay. Um, every other issue.
Thank you, Oshie. I, tarzani, eh, ku, she, go, kumpre, eh, kuso, pa, wa, ni, kwe, 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 zbo, wa, ya, ka, fa. Ya, tia, kati, koi, kama, is, a, ti, si, xam, u, cha, zwa, kuti, za, u, tanga, pa, ni. Wuzi, ta, to, mo, si, pa, ku, she, kwa, kwa, wa, shan, tu, wa, na, xuma. Ta, drosu, pa, ne, kuti, se, kuti, eh, ku, o, ai, ah, shu, za, shu, za, wa, nyani, ya, wa, shan, ti, wa. No, kro, kro.
Yes. Thank you, Oshie. Eh, kuti, ya, tawo, na, Councillor, am, je, ili, under, am, ya, eh, partner, wa, tina, eh, aru, ku, ongoro, ra, u, tanga, pa, improve, se, pa, mko, wa, na, klini. Sagai, je, je, takata, mi, no, ta, tange, my improvement. Bo, eh, first station is part of the agreed, eh, set, na, na, tu, na, eh, wa, na, eh, aru, somu, tu, za, eh, mko, wa, na, klini. But I understand that this point in time, pa, ne, bo, eh, ju, pa, mko, ba, oh, which is just next to, to the clinic. Also, even improved, when ya, ta, ona, you can, right, you can work from going. I think this problem is a bit temporary, because of these moves, the people, Oshie, that's it.
Okay, Councillor, am, away.
I say, continue, Oshie. Way big, mota, ze, fire, eh, ze, eh, ze, yewu. Zaid, aso, fire, station. Sagas, no, problem, ma, break, then, woz, a, pa, ne, on, wa, na, pa, ni, kai, ju, wa, la, specialist, mo, de. Sag, no, na, damp, tu, la, tanga, na, kuti, eh, ya, mo, ya, ke. Eh, zaid, la, mo, de, zo, zo. Sangbo, sa, kui, wa, la, ma, ju, wa, na, wa, kati, me, de. Because, na, tasa, zet, zat, we, tu, pa, ta, se, du, ya, ma, ti, pa. Angos, zulu, na, tasa, kua, wa, yu, no, se, ti, so. Na, tasa, kua, kati, no, se, ti, so, ma, specialist. Sagan, gaita, we, tu, be, se, ku, yewu, ku, timo, da, zibaki, ne, na, ma, koko. Is, I say, continue, Oshie, if ma, break, ra, ta, on, sa, tina, eh, council, ita, eh, vita, eh, si, zu, to, kwa.
Thank you, Councillor. So, we have someone to propose for action of the, yewu, telephone. Councillor.
Okay, thank you. Boss.
Ma, kasi, no, ma, kasi, no, ma, kasi, fa, yeh, de, pa. Kama, se, kuti, cora, ose. Eh, episte, ki, wo, ki, ha, tu, o, ose. Eh, kuti, ne, je, pin, eh, kuti, tu, na, kuti, yo, are, respond, eh, po. Eh, ne, pe, ne, ita, shi, Oshie, ma, gaita, se, kuti, si, ku, se, ne, wa, me, kai, ka. Eh, pa, ti, ku, pa, ku, pi, wa, koe, Oshie, mi, ju, sa, na, ku, ku. Ne, ne, space, ne, yo, wa, ni, ya, kwa, me, wa, kia, da. Ewa, eh, da, base, ne, tu, wa, na, ku, da, barase, eh, eh, koo, pa, leka, banka, eh, wa, joo, pa, leka, she, eh, she, eh, she. So. So.
Okay. Yes, uh.
Thank you, your worship. Yeah, maybe. Now, it's. Correct. Your worship. House. It's not really an engineer in housing. You're going to get. So. That's. An engineer in department. Because. You. I. As. Significant improvement. It's only housing. She. I'm. I. Because. My. Who. They. But. No. Say. But. Say. Me. But. You. That. In. Eh, but. You. It's. Eh, house. By. It. It. When. It's. However, our main challenge, your worship. You know. After. But. You. But. No. So. But. It's. As. In. I'm. 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 But. My. Please. To assist the department. But. But. My. So. Thank you, your worship.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, uh.
Thank you. Uh, I can't. I don't. Yes. Yes. Eh, I'm. From. Eh, but. I. I think. You. But. Yeah. Yeah. You. But. But. It's. 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 So. So. You. 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 So.
Yeah.
So. Don't. You. Don't. You. But. But. One. So. Eh, you. Yeah. I. So.
Okay. Thank you so much. Eh, thank you, guys. But. You. Problem. Eh, but. I'm. It's. But. Eh, inconsistent. In between our. Number one is housing. It should not wait in list. Our waiting list is. We. When. But. But. That. But. Waiting list. It's. For planning. Purpose is. Actually. But. It's. So. In. It is. You. Waiting list. Yeah. Same. That. But. So. For planning. Process. There is already. Step. No. Now. Your worship. I'm. Inconsistent. I'm. But. But. Engineer. But. Need. Sorry. Come. From. So. It must be solved. It's not only housing. But. It's. And. Part. Part. In. But. But. Then. But. And. The. Mon. And. In. So. Then. This. The. Inconsistent. It's. The. I. Who is. The. Who is. The. Was. Who. And. Which. The. Access. So. As. After. They have to meet somewhere and agree on the path. So. 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 Not. But. No. That.
That's.
Okay. And. The. This. For the time being. Your worship. Best. Issue. If. The. Engineer. The. The. Come. Yeah. But. Can. You. But. I. So. Unless. Or. So. Did. Yeah. So.
Maybe. Eh. Is. This. The. The. Yeah.
Yeah. I think. The. I. You. Catch. I. Yeah. But. Yeah.
I. You. I think. This. Is. Housing.
What. What. I. That. I. That.
Ah.
Yeah. I. So. So. You.
So.
Well, thank you, your worship. It's a combined effort. I think. What. Was. Steps are being done. To. My. My. I. You. Where each and every. Was requested by the T C. To. Unseam. Seems. And that's what the E O D six. Exactly. And now what we are doing. To. Oh, but. On the housing. On the engineering. On the finance. You. Is only that we are. So. I'm. You. I. I'm. Well. Yeah. We don't know. Because. So. I. Transport. Man. I. She. So. Yeah. It's. It's like. You. My. The next thing. Was. You. She. Illegal. And. Engineer. I. You. She. My. It's. Housing. We are busy now. My. I'm. Here. They are there. Your worship. We are registering people. Now. No. No. For. My. Can. Wait. He. Every day. The. Apply. In. But. Who. Have. They. Designated. So. I. Triple. The. They. But it's only that. This report we are looking at. Is. Eh. Organize. So. September. Now. October. So many things. Within. My. Even. Our. Staff. They. Come. So. I. My. Yes. But. So. 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 I. No. I. So. Then. I. Can. I. But. So. Engineer. They. So. I. I. Yes. I. And. It's. So. I. I. So. Your worship. Yes. They. They. Then. They. So. So. Are we just have to put our. So. Their house is to be put in order. And. So. I'm. I. I. Because. Many. Places. But. My. Okay. Thank you, your worship.
Oh.